Good evening, everybody. This is the Newbury zoning board of appeals. Today is January 20th, 7:30. My name is Eric Swan on the chair. Elaine Baker on the video monitor. I have Mario Caravani on the public hearing. Our master coordinator. Jack Kelly, associate member. Michelle Cwiedler, associate member. Larry Murphy lays on the planning board. Martha Taylor, planning, town planning director. And Chrissy O'Crade is our administrative assistant. So with that, before we open the public hearings, we have one order of business that we should set. And that is to just to discuss, should we hold February's meeting in person? Or should we hold it remotely? If any application or hearing has continued, we need a certain location, time, and date. So we'd like to just clarify that before we, if needed. Does anybody have any?
I'm okay with the person.
I'm okay with the person, too.
You guys have an opinion? Say something.
I'll go along with the person.
Okay. So we'll continue February's meeting in person then? Alrighty.
Read this one here.
Read this first one.
Okay, public hearing, Joshua and Joyce Spalding, 2440th Street. Applicants are requesting a special permit finding for relief with Section 97-4D, 5D of Newbury zoning bylaws and any other permit relief as may be required under the Town of Newbury zoning bylaws to allow the proposed use project to allow for the raising of the existing dwelling at 240th Street, existing lot 11, and the construction of a new dwelling with an increased height for the lots located at 2-440th Street, Plum Island, Newbury, Mass. No changes are proposed to the existing dwelling at 440th Street, existing lot 10, assessors Mac U 04, lots 10 and 11. Owners Joshua and Joyce Spalding. Continued from 121621.
Do we want to read the second one in at the same time?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Josh and Joyce Spalding, applicants are requesting a variance for the relief of Section 97-6B of the Town zoning board bylaws, lot size, and any other permit relief as may be required under the Town of Newbury zoning bylaws to allow the proposed use project for the combination of both lots into a single lot and the construction of a new dwelling unit on the newly combined lot located at 2-440th Street, Plum Island, Newbury. No changes are proposed to the existing dwelling at 440th Street, existing lot 10, assessors Mac U 04, lots 10 and 11. Continued from 1612. Applicants are requesting a withdrawal variance application without prejudice.
Right.
Hi, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Martha Taylor, Ms. O'Crade, good evening. Douglas Duchesne representing the Spaldings. I provided you just a quick outline of my presentation tonight if you want to follow along. Again, Douglas Duchesne with Bennett and Nicholson representing the Spaldings. Unfortunately, the Spaldings, well, unfortunately for the Spaldings, they are in Florida and were unable to attend. However, they are, I can assure you, they're at home anxiously awaiting my phone call. You'll recall Matthew Stine was the engineer on the project. Matt is also unavailable this evening. But I am happy to say that Rachel Harris, our architect, is here with me this evening to answer any of the board's questions. From procedural standpoint, as was just mentioned, you'll recall that we had originally applied for some variances in order to allow us to merge the Spaldings' lots and then to relocate or redevelop one of the homes on the new merged lot so that they could create more of a family compound and so that they could construct the new home. However, while I do believe the board appreciated what the Spaldings are trying to do in terms of the reconstruction of the home and locating it in a better position and everything else, I, it was clear that we did not meet our burden in being entitled to the variances. So we heard that loud and clear and I do appreciate the board in being straightforward with that so that we knew what to do. So we have, in the first instance, asked to withdraw variance requests because we are not seeking any variances at this time. I would ask that the board allow that withdrawal without prejudice. Secondly, I did modify the special permit request. As you'll see, it's pretty much in keeping with what we've proposed before, although we are doing it entirely within the confines of 240th Street, Lot 11, as I believe it's referred to on the plans. Yes, so again, here this evening to ask that you withdraw the variance request and secondly, to present our modified special permit request. So would the board like to, me to just move forward with the modified special permit? Or do you want to discuss the variance withdrawal?
Well, I think we should get to the variance withdrawal first and just clear that out of the way. And then, secondly, I think we need to talk about what the name of the application is since it deals with a single property and not multiple properties now.
Okay.
And then I think we can, once that's clarified of what property we're talking about, then I think we can proceed.
Very good, thank you.
Okay, so does the board have any discussion on the withdrawal without prejudice for the variances? And you're the voting member.
I'm in favor.
Alright, so is there a motion?
I make a motion to accept the request to withdraw variance application without prejudice at 240th Street in Newbury.
Great, is there a second?
Sorry.
All those in favor?
Hi. Excuse me, with Elaine participating in the vote, but they all need to do a whole vote.
Oh, I'm sorry. Elaine Baker then.
Yes.
Mario.
Yes.
Eric, yes.
Yes.
Thanks, Martha. Sorry about that. Sorry, Elaine.
That's all right.
You usually speak up quite loudly when you're speaking, so we expect the same when you're on the screen. Alrighty, so then, the next is just understanding that somewhere along the lines, this needs to be retitled to 240th Street.
Okay.
Okay.
I apologize if I didn't articulate it on my, right.
I just want to make sure that we all refer to it that going forward.
You're right, I was not entirely clear. I said that I would respectfully ask to modify the application as follows. The Spaldings are now proposing to raise the pre-existing nonconforming home on, you know, 240th Street, Lot 11, period. No changes are proposed to the structure at 440. So I wasn't clear that 440th was no longer part, but it is not. We are strictly talking with regard to 240th Street, Lot number 11. And Ms. Baker, I'm sorry, is my back to her or?
No, no, you're good. Don't worry about it.
Alright. Hey, can I continue?
Yes.
Oh, thank you. With respect to the relief request, as was just stated, we are now speaking only of 240th Street, Lot 11. The Spaldings have asked me to request the board to consider granting a special permit under Section 97-4D, by small d, of the Newbury zoning bylaws to allow them to raise the dwelling at 240th Street and to construct a more conforming dwelling on the lot. And there is a little typo on my presentation that says on the combined lot, that's a carryover. This is not combined lot, it is only on lot 240th Street.
So it's like correction there, it's not D special permit because you're not reconstructing, you're actually F demolition, rebuilding after a fighting.
Yes.
So it's 97-4D, 5F. That's right, took me back and forth to figure it out.
The Spaldings are seeking to raise the pre-existing nonconforming home on the lot at 240th Street, which is also a pre-existing nonconforming lot, and to construct a new, single-family home on the lot, which will result in the elimination or reduction of all of the existing nonconformities with the exception of one side yard nonconformity. And we believe that that reconstruction will provide benefits to the neighborhood rather than being detrimental in any way. With respect to the existing conditions, as I said, the lot is pre-existing nonconforming. It has 4,875 square feet in area. It has frontage of 75 feet along 40th Street. And obviously, no changes are now proposed to that lot whatsoever. The structure itself is pre-existing nonconforming as to the front yard setback, a side yard setback, lot coverage, and FAR. So we have a nonconforming structure in, at least. At least with respect, no, at least with respect. I hope that's a supportive bar. I'm good with that. And so we do have lot coverage is over as well as the FAR. I have provided you copies of the structure at 240th Street. You can see that it is well dated and in not the best of repairs. And I provided you shots of it from Northern Boulevard, across from Northern Boulevard, and then from 40th Street. That picture that shows where the houses are, excuse me, where the two cars are parked and the boat. That's essentially where we're looking to push the house into that area. I do want to make note that while the current home sits directly adjacent to that white structure you see on Northern Boulevard, where the cars are parked and where we want to place the house, there's nothing in the behind, there are no homes behind them. Rather, that is the front and backyards to the two of budding properties. So by moving that house, we'll get it away from the house up on Northern Boulevard and put it in a place where it really won't be directly adjacent to any other structure. With respect to the special permit, we are proposing to build a single-story home, which is what the existing home is. The new home is also single-story. It's actually slightly smaller than the existing home by some 30-odd feet or so, but it is nevertheless a smaller home, smaller footprint. We are increasing the height of the existing dwelling. However, the majority of the height increase is due to the fact that we are putting the home onto pilings in order to meet flood regulations. So I think we get four or five feet of increased height for the pilings, but the height of the house itself relative to the existing, it's only a minor increase. The new structure will meet lot coverage, will meet FAR requirements, which it meets neither of those currently, and it also meets your height requirements. With the exception of the one side yard, which I'll discuss in a moment, the new structure will meet all setback requirements and it will eliminate the existing front yard nonconformities. The existing nonconforming side yard, which is currently at 8.3 feet, we are asking the board to consider allowing us to reduce that to one foot. The reason for this is to allow the Spaldings to push the house back from its current location along Northern Boulevard, push it back into the lot. You recall, we wanted to push it farther, but, you know, to stay within the lot, we were asking to be able to increase that nonconformity. But we are also proposing to provide, as you know, the Spaldings, in two separate entities, own the homes. So we are proposing that the Spalding entity that controls this house would actually provide a 10-foot easement to this house. That way, given the fact that the house is very close to the lot line, there'll never be a future discussion or concern with how do we get around the house. Now, as you know, the Spaldings are hoping to make this their forever home and the idea is to pass this compound on to their family and their children's children. But we all have to plan for the unexpected. So in the event that these two properties were ever held separately, then this house would always have a 10-foot easement, which would allow it to get around the house, to access the house, to park here if they wanted to. And what it would also do is prevent any future owners of this home from building anything here, putting anything here. So the idea of making sure that all homes have adequate access for maintenance and safety can be accomplished by providing the 10-foot easement. Now, the reconstruction of this existing dwelling, as we discussed at length at the last meeting, will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. In fact, I've argued that for the most part, or in its entirety, we believe that this will provide benefits to the neighborhood. And as you recall, all of our neighbors are in support of this and agree that it would enhance the neighborhood. Moving the house back from the roadway from Northern Boulevard, as the Spaldings are hoping to achieve is a safety improvement from their perspective. It'll also allow them to landscape and plant that front yard along Northern Boulevard, which will certainly benefit that corridor. The improved aesthetics of the property will increase property values, not only to that home but to surrounding neighborhood, which will result in tax revenue increase for the town. The increase in the nonconforming side yard, we'd like to move from 8.3 a foot with the easement, is not going to be detrimental to the neighborhood. In fact, the only abutters that would be, could be deemed to be affected is in fact, the Spaldings themselves. With respect to the neighbors, to the rear here, they benefit from us sliding the house back because their house is up here. So now they're going to have, they're not going to be as boxed in. I told you, the other house is up here, so that's not affected. And again, the only house that's going to be affected by this reduced side yard would be the Spaldings themselves. And they're very happy to grant an easement and protect themselves, so.
Can I have a question on that, Mr. Duchesne?
Sure.
You're getting me a little confused there. It sounds like we've got three side yards and no rear yard. Wouldn't that more accurately be described as a rear setback or?
That's a very interesting question, and I'm going to bring that up in a minute.
Okay, you're going to get to it.
No, 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 it's a perfect time. It's a great question. I spoke with Mr. Bennett, the zoning enforcement officer, about how the town addresses what I call corner lots. If they have frontage on two streets. Many towns say, well, then you have two fronts, two rears, no sides. Other towns will say, and what Newbury does, according to Mr. Bennett, if you have frontage on two streets, you can decide which one you want to claim to be your frontage and which one you want to be a side. So currently, we've said that this is our frontage, making this a rear and these two sides. But as Mr. Bennett explained to me this morning, if it was beneficial to you or beneficial to the board, that you could, you can always claim this to be your frontage, which would make this a rear setback, nonconforming, and then these would be your two sides. You'll also note that as we've designed the house, whether you call this your frontage or this your frontage, we meet the front yard setback. And whether you call this a rear or a side, we meet the setback. It's only, again, this existing nonconforming that we're seeking to extend. So again, we've called it a side yard, but it makes a difference. According to the billing inspector, the zoning enforcement officer, we could declare it as our frontage. Doesn't affect your address, doesn't affect anything really, just your frontage. But Newbury does not recognize two front yards. You've got to choose one.
Thank you.
With respect to the question of detrimental impacts to the neighborhood, you'll recall at the last meeting, I did provide you a written letter of support from every one of our budding neighbors. And some of the neighbors were here to speak. I do believe there's a neighbor here to speak in support again tonight with this modified approval. And we have still not received any letters of opposition or anyone calling to question what was being done. So in conclusion, the Spaldings, in hoping to rebuild the dwelling at 240th Street, would like to reduce or eliminate most of the existing nonconformities. And most importantly to them, pull the house back from Northern Boulevard. The proposed new dwelling will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood or the Plum Island community in general. It reduces the overall lot coverage. It brings it into conformance. It reduces the fire. And it reduces or eliminates the existing front yard setback nonconformity. The only thing that we're not eliminating or improving is the side yard setback, which we would ask the board to find that allowing us to move to a foot and providing the easement would not be detrimental to the neighborhood. The Spaldings have really tried to address your earlier concerns about the variances and they understand why. But they are still hopeful that they can achieve their goal of moving the house back, redoing it, improving it for the neighborhood, and then achieving it through this method rather than, you know, the more complicated and difficult path we chose originally. So I'm happy to answer any questions you might have. Rachel is also here to answer any of the questions relating to the architecture or the FAR calculations and things like that.
Thank you. Elaine, do you have any questions?
Yeah.
Any questions?
Yeah, I, no. The plan says that it's existing one-story, but it says proposed too. But he said just a few minutes ago, it's a single-story house, so.
Yeah, I can, I can speak to that. You know, it's kind of halfway in between. We added, we added a very small lot. There's no bedrooms upstairs. There's no staircase upstairs. There's a small loft that you walk up to and then you can access the roof deck. So it's not, there's no bedrooms. There's a very, very tiny amount of second-floor space, but it's very low headroom. I'm not, it's all, I think it's all under seven feet, so whether or not it would truly be considered story is kind of open to interpretation.
Okay. I guess if it meets the definition of an occupiable room.
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's occupiable, it doesn't have.
By height, does it have a window?
It has a window.
Does it have a closet?
No.
Alright, and so it meets the height, it meets the window, but it doesn't have a closet, which technically doesn't make it a bedroom, but it makes it floor area.
Yes, we include it in the FAR.
Yeah, so we include it in the FAR in terms of is it a one-story house? Is it a two-story house? I guess, I felt like that was a little bit more of a gray area, but yes, all that, but as shown on the plans, the hatched area that's of the required head height is included in the FAR.
Maybe also Elaine?
Yeah, the second question I have is about this 10-foot wide access easement. So should the board decide that we're going to approve this or not approve it? Is it something that you're going to prepare and record? So it's going to run with the land?
Yes, in fact, if the board so desired, it could certainly be a condition of the approval that that easement be created, drafted, and recorded. And it will be an easement in perpetuity. So once it's granted to this lot, it will forever be in existence for this lot. And yes, we fully intended to record it and make it permanent. Yes.
Is there any other questions? Michelle?
No, I have the same question about the easement, but that's it.
Jack?
No, I don't have it. I think it's a pretty clear presentation. I think the drawings are quite good, particularly how she had the hatched area upstairs because I was questioning that, too.
Go ahead. So I have an issue with the terminology or what's being presented. Because you have an existing nonconforming house, you have, those are the nonconformities.
Yes.
And you can remove those nonconformities.
Yep.
You can lessen those nonconformities and you can keep those nonconformities. But you can't exacerbate or extend over or make them worse.
Why is, but we have, in the past, had situations where we had pre-existing nonconforming FAR and yet, by showing that it would not have detrimental impact on the neighborhood, we've been allowed to increase that nonconforming slightly. And my understanding is that in a, when you are modifying a pre-existing nonconforming use, you can in fact, by special permit, rather than variance, increase the nonconformity with a finding of non-detrimental impact to the neighborhood. In fact, I, that was also part of my discussion earlier today with Mr. Bennett. I wanted to verify that that was his interpretation.
And under the bylaws, in terms of the setback and the dimensional requirements of the town, it says shall not make a positive finding for any alteration, reconstruction, extension, or change to structures that would cause the structure to be located less than 10 feet from the side lot line or less than 20 feet from, or less, a nearer building line is already established by the existing buildings. So I think the intent, yes, we have and seeking through the special permit and finding, but there are reasons why the dimensional requirements are there.
Yes.
And I don't think you've shown or proved how the one-foot dimension is in keeping with the neighborhood. And I'm not in agreement with the easement at all because the second lot sells with the easement, they can build 10 feet from that line. And now you'll have two feet. You'll have two properties that have the right to have structures 11 feet apart. All intent is to keep the value of the properties, I'll just read it from the section. You know, the purpose and tenet of the bylaws is to promote the health, the safety, and the general welfare of the inhabitants of the town of Newbury, including without limitation, to conserve health, to conserve safety from fire, flood, panic, and other dangers, to add adequate light, air, and to prevent overcrowding of land, to avoid undue concentration of population, to encourage housing for persons of all income levels to facilitate adequate provisions for transportation of water. And it goes on. But the intent of Plum Island, the nonconformities and the PIOD is to make improvements on the conditions that were set up by such small lot sizes that don't meet zone. So what, in my opinion, I think that you can, you can move, you can have a side yard of 10 feet because it says it here, or you can claim to extend or keep the nonconformity of the 84 feet. And that's where the location of the house goes.
Well, I, let me address, first of all, having a house a foot off of the lot line, while not certainly the goal or intention of the bylaws, I have to say, there are other houses in the neighborhood, and you know, as well as I do, many homes on Plum Island where the properties are, you know, within a foot of the property line and in so many cases, over the property line. So it wouldn't be creating a situation that isn't, quite frankly, pretty prevalent on Plum Island. Again, not necessarily a condition we want to create, but it is not inconsistent with the neighborhood. In fact, the home on 440th Street, the Spaldings neighboring home, I believe is just a foot or two off of its property line, you know, at that same direction.
I hear what you're saying, but the intent. But the intent of the bylaws and having bylaws and having dimensional criteria and having use groups is to protect the... And set an equality for properties and structures in Newbury.
I understand.
And, you know, you can take the name off, and you can take the wants, and you can take the intended use off. Because the bylaws are here to protect everybody in Newbury and protect the future. So the statement you just made, I think, is erroneous. Because anybody that does have a house that's over the property line and comes before us, we would then put that dimensional requirement to improve or remove that nonconformity. So anything that's existing that is nonconforming that would come before us, the effort is to put it back into the dimensional requirements so that Plum Island becomes more standardized and regularized, that improves the light and air and safety of it. And, you know, allowing you to build one foot from the property line, having them sell the second property, having somebody else come in and buy that property and say, "I want to build 10 feet from the property line," and then saying, "Well, jeez, that house is really close." You know?
All right, let me address that if I could. First of all, and, you know, I didn't draft the bylaw, nor, you know, did Mr. Vinat. But what the bylaw said that you referred to says that the board cannot grant an extension of, or a change... And the extension implies an extension of the nonconformity, or a change to substructures that would cause such structure to be located less than 10 feet from a side lot line or less than 20 feet from a street, unless a nearer building line is already established. Well, in this case, there is already a nearer building line already established at the 8.3. So we're already nonconforming as to that. So one interpretation could be that if you're already nonconforming, then the board can consider whether your extension of the nonconformity is significantly detrimental or not. Moreover, and I guess, you know, it is semantics, but the bylaw says that you can't allow a structure less than 10 feet from a lot line unless it's been, you know, something has already been established as pre-existing, which is our case. It does not refer to real lot lines. It specifically talks about 10 feet to the side and 20 feet to the front. So as we discussed earlier, the board feels that it would provide you the opportunity to grant the permit, then I'm happy to say that we will be... We would claim that our front yard is Northern Boulevard. Therefore, the line that we're asking to extend closer is a real yard line, which is not prohibited from being extended. But, you know, it's semantics. But I also think, when you talk about the intent of the bylaw, that it wants to bring things as close to conformance, safety, distance. I think you have, that's with respect to the entire project. Although we're, you know, we're looking to extend this one nonconformity, this whole thing is eliminating multiple nonconformities. And it's reducing the footprint, bringing us into conformance with law coverage. It's reducing the already, you know, unbalanced.
Yeah.
Mr. Swan, this is doing exactly what that bylaw wants us to do, is make it safer. Now, something came to me while you were suggesting, and it's a good point. I had proposed that we give the easement so that we would prohibit anyone from, you know, building anything close. Or, most importantly, allowing these people to have... Allowing these people to have room to get around their house.
Not find the easement.
What if, what if we would...
You can't build within the 10 feet anyway.
Well, what's on?
You can't build within the 10 feet.
Okay, well, this is what I'm suggesting.
So then you keep slicing and dicing.
What if the easement was extended to 20 feet? And then if that easement would not only go to the benefit of two...
Now you're just pushing it off on other properties, and you're making other conditions that are not conforming by making easements and all these things. If you truly were improving the property, as I said before, I think you have the right to hold to the eight feet or the existing location of the house. So you're not exacerbating an existing nonconformity, and you're claiming that nonconformity. Or you're at 10 feet. Period.
Well, again, I have to respectfully disagree. I think that what the Spaldings are doing here is, on the whole, in taking in consideration all of the changes they're making, they are, in fact, following the intent of the bylaw was just to make these houses sit in a better, safer location as for all houses, not just their other home, but the neighbors. I mean...
But they're creating the condition of putting their house closer to a lot line for when that next... When that property that has an existing non... Has existing nonconformities where the house is over or right on the property line, that house will have to be rebuilt back in the center of the lot. So if everybody follows the same thing, then we have the intent of the bylaw.
Right, but if we provide a 20-foot easement, then those people could not move the house closer than 20 feet, which would provide for a minimum of 21 feet between the halls, which far exceeds the distance between most homes on Plum Island.
They don't think the easement is a solution and so it's a, you know, a stopgap or for an extreme means is such an aberrant.
Well, it's preventing future issues. It's preventing future issues.
And just get rid of the other house and merge the two lots and put the house where you want it. Or buy a bigger lot and put the house where you want it.
Well, you mean, you mean take both houses down?
Yeah.
Yes?
Yeah, and combine the lots.
Well, that's not what they're trying to achieve. I mean, we tried to do that before. We came in to see if we could merge the lots, rebuild the second house, you know, in a good location, and...
There's dimensional requirements that are made and fit the size of the lot, right? That's what we're trying to get at. If you have a bigger lot, like the people just to your north, you can have a much bigger house because you've got a bigger lot. And then the criteria is here that limits and tries to control. And for the really small lots, we know it's difficult. We have made some exceptions where it's slightly over. But I don't think, in my opinion, you can go from eight feet to one feet and call that an improvement in keeping with the intent of the bylaw.
Well, I've never claimed that it was an improvement. I said that the total relocation of the house, eliminating all the other nonconformities, but, you know, requiring one nonconformity to be extended, if you look at that overall, it is meeting the intent of the bylaw. It's making things better and safer for everyone.
And building, demolishing and building new, you have every chance to make it meet the intent of the bylaw. And those, you know, as well as I do, any application that comes before us and says, "Look, I had this, and it was nonconforming. And look, we're doing this, and it meets everything and within the PIOD." Done, go do it.
Well, that's what I thought we did here.
No, you're still, you're asking for more than already exists, and you're taking a nonconformity, and you're making it more nonconforming.
But not to the detriment of anyone? Certainly not the neighborhood?
It's not, in my opinion. I think you are by building that close to the lot line.
How is that detrimental to the budget?
Because you're affecting the next properties. And then we'll have the same issue. We'll be discussing the same thing. And if you do that and you set a precedent, you come back and forth to the neighbor that wants to do the same thing, and you say, "Hey, well, look, he did it." Well, I'm not doing it this time because you can't claim that later. So I'm against it.
I agree that the easement definitely reduces the value of the abutting property. So I understand the Spaldings don't have any intention of selling it. But let's face it, down the road, someone will want to sell that. And you've reduced the value of that property by adding easement.
Well, not really, because they couldn't build in that 10-foot anyways, as Mr. Swan pointed out earlier.
One thing that kind of supports or weakens the Spalding's argument is that the math works out perfectly. If it slid nine feet towards Northern Boulevard, whether it's the front or the side, if it slid nine feet towards Northern Boulevard, then you have 10 feet to the rear. And like Eric said, there's not really much of an argument.
And in some cases, the uniformity for the 20 feet for the front yard is to give some breadth to the street. I think in some conditions or in some zoning, actually, the distance from the street is actually set and held so that you don't have this sawtooth kind of gap-tooth measure where you have houses, and then you've got some are setback and some are forward. And it makes a more even line. It makes for a more, for a better setting. And the more rural and the more developing you have, more that comes into play in zoning and planning. So, you know, I understand they want to be pushed back. But again, if they just put the house on the existing nonconforming setback, which I think is 8.4 feet, is it?
Yeah, 8.3.
8.3? I think you're, what we're saying is you're extending the nonconformity because you're maybe making the house wider along that line, but you're not increasing it. And I don't think we have any, I would not have an argument with that.
Is the board in agreement with that? I know, Mr. Swan, with all due respect, is one vote. I mean, I'd love to hear what the other neighbors feel. I mean, the other members feel. I'm in a loss. Quite frankly, I thought after our last meeting, my goal was to eliminate variances and to meet your bylaw of showing that what we're proposing to do, including the extension of that one nonconformity, would not be significantly detrimental to the neighborhood. And I have to disagree that this, being close to this one side yard setback would be detrimental to the neighborhood when it really only affects the Spaldings' other home. And you're right, they could at some point be owned by separate owners. But anybody buying that home, I mean, it's right there on the title of the property. There's an easement. And it's an easement in favor of the neighbors. And you can't build anything. You can't block their use of it, and they have full use of it. And if your real concern is that the people at 440th, somewhere down the road, would want to rebuild that house, you know, 10 feet off the lot line, well, then just requiring a 20-foot easement prevents that from ever happening. They could never build closer than 20 feet.
Period. What happens if erosion keeps going in Plum Island, and that first house next to the ocean falls in or something? And the people want to push their new houses far away? I just think we're, you know, we're trying to set up for the long future of Plum Island with proper planning and meeting the requirements. And as the requirement says, you know, it will not be 10 feet from the side lot line. And as you argued, we can, you know, 10 feet from the rear or from the side.
It says side, doesn't say rear.
And I think you're having semantics within that, it's a lot line.
Well, it does say rear setback on your chart here on the zoning table.
Yes, yes.
And it lists that it's 10 feet.
Yes, that's, we've always maintained that, you know, 40th, 40th Street was our front. All I'm saying is because we have frontage on Northern Boulevard, the building inspector has said, "If you want to choose Northern Boulevard as your frontage and make that a rear line," that's entirely up to you. But again, it's semantics and, you know, but if it gives the board an opportunity to consider this, you know, I'm happy to say right now that we will just redo the plan and show it as a rear yard. But I certainly don't want to go through that trouble and expense and time if that's not going to make a difference.
It's not going to make a difference. All right. Jack, how do you feel?
I would support either the 8.3 or the 10-foot. I mean, it's really weird, 7-inch difference or 9-inch difference or something, so.
Do that math one more time.
Well, he's just saying, if we maintain the 8.3, we can still build the house and not violate the front yard or, well, or the side. I mean, if it's, we call it a side. Even though it's on Northern Boulevard, it's only 10-foot requirement. So we have the room. But who wants to build a house that close to Northern Boulevard? That's a big part of what they're trying to do, is get this away from Northern Boulevard, getting it tucked in, back into, you know, 40th Street, which is a small...
Which affects other parcels down the road in terms of pushing itself close. If your argument was that we couldn't make 20 feet work because the back would then have to be five, it would be a different discussion of what we value more, right? But to just do it because you want to do it, and then be pushed back and still need the 20 feet, I think you can keep the existing nonconformity. You can meet the front and the other side yard setbacks. And you've got a project.
Do you want to check with Elaine?
Elaine?
What?
Do you have an opinion on the one-foot versus the 8.3 and allowing a one-foot?
One foot is no good because he's flip-flopping back and forth. And why push it 29 feet back from 21 to 25? Why doesn't it have to be 29 feet from Northern Boulevard? You went 20, you went from 20.9 to 29 feet. I mean, is there a specific reason why you went that far back?
Well, the Spaldings just want to push it far back from Northern Boulevard as they can. I mean, it's busy, noisy, it's everything. They just want it back. You know, that other, you know, as you move down 40th, it's just so much quieter. And, you know, they kind of want to make these houses more of a compound situation. Would the, you mentioned, you know, rather than pushing it back to 29, if we pushed it back to 24? I guess that raises the question, would the board consider allowing us to increase that nonconformity at all? Even if, you know, can we go to five feet? The Spaldings have asked me to get to one. But, you know, anything that the board thinks is reasonable beats a denial. It, I mean, with five feet?
I stand at the existing nonconformity and not extending it. Period. 8.3 feet, that's your right. And if someone else comes before us and has a yard setback in which they have a nonconformity, and we have not allowed, in terms of dimensional requirements, the extension of that. If you were to keep part of the house and rebuild it, you have that right. The Section D says you can demolish it, and by a finding, you can increase the height and you can increase the size of the house. You have the right, through the building inspector, to get a building permit and say, "Look, my house, I'm going to demolish my house, going to build the exact same thing." You have the right to do that.
And same footprint?
Yeah.
And no harm?
Right.
Yes.
And so now you're increasing your own nonconforming lot. There needs to be some control and metrics, and that's what the bylaws are doing. And you need to meet it. So that's just where I stand. You have a right at the 8.3 feet, and you can maintain that.
Well, we have a right to ask for an extension of that, provided we're not going to be significantly more detrimental to the neighborhood.
Yeah, I think the extent, the definition of extension of is in terms of having, if you had a normal lot of 40,000 square foot built a lot, and you had a nonconformity, and you could extend along that line.
Correct.
But you could not increase or diminish or exacerbate the nonconformity. Your house is eight feet from a property line on a, you know, just a regular AR zone lot. You could seek a finding to extend it and maintain that nonconformity. If you wanted to increase that nonconformity, you'd have to come and get a variance. So the same applies here. So, the same applies here.
Um, might I be able to take a short recess so I can reach out to my client? Just take me two minutes to give him a call?
Yeah, if you can, I think if you can keep it under five minutes, we can, we can do it. It's going to take longer.
No, two minutes. Thank you.
Yep.
All right. Thank you very much for allowing me that opportunity to call Mr. Spauling and Mrs. Spauling. I honestly, they're very disappointed how they felt their, their proposal was in keeping with what we discussed at the last meeting and certainly in keeping with their goals. However, they do want to rebuild this house, they do want to make Plum Island their permanent home, and they want to establish their family there. If we were to modify our proposal to move to the eight point three feet with all other provisions staying the same, the only other change of the result would be, you know, we would, we would be twenty-one feet or twenty feet from Northern Boulevard, which under our current filing is a side yard anyway, so we only need ten, but we will be in excess of twenty. Would the board be willing to grant the permit with that condition? That we, that we maintain the eight point three feet?
We can have a discussion about that, and I believe, yes, I could be in favor of that.
Then the board, my clients have authorized me to ask you to consider that with a condition that we maintain the eight point three feet, otherwise build the structure as proposed.
Before we close the public hearing, can I ask if there's anybody in the audience that would like to speak in favor of the project? If you'd stand up and say your name.
Scott Mueller, 111 Northern Boulevard. For definition, it's the old church property where I live, so we share 40th Street there. And we're fully supportive of what Joe and Joyce want to do there, and, you know, we can make alterations, so be it. But again, we're fully supportive. We think it's a be a wonderful enhancement for the neighborhood, the street, the community, so.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Share your opinion. Is there anybody else that'd like to speak in favor? Is there anybody that'd like to speak against? Okay. So with that, we'll close the public hearing. Board, can I have any debate or coordination?
Yeah, I have a question.
Go ahead.
If we move it back, Eric?
Yes.
Hello?
Yeah.
So, if we, if we go back to the eight point three feet, does that eliminate the easement?
Yes, it can eliminate the easement.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, that's what he said, but that's fine.
Okay. Michelle, I need discussion or debate? Jack?
I'm good with eight point three, I won't do any more math.
Is there a motion?
All right, so, should we make a motion? Do I have to make a motion to withdraw the variance first?
We, we get that.
Okay.
Well, on this, for this property, we can do that as a technicality to remove the variance from, from this. Since there are two hearings, we'll just, we'll do that.
Okay.
So, make a motion to withdraw them.
So, I, do you want to make a, well-
Excuse me, Mario actually wasn't a voting member on this, so I think it was Elaine, Jack, and you.
Okay.
I make a motion to withdraw the variance?
Okay. To change this in title to two 40th Street and that the, the builder's, building inspector's denial would be under ninety-seven dash four D five, rebuilding after a finding. Demolition, demolition, rebuilding after a finding. So now that we've got it titled correctly, is there a motion for the proposed project?
Approve as, as the industry is describing.
Okay. So, we'll make a motion to grant a special permit finding for the proposed plan with the modification that the house gets moved from the one foot as shown on the plan to the eight point three, which matches the existing condition of the plan. That said, the plan meets the front yard, the side B, the rear. The proposed project slightly reduces the FAR and lot coverage. And with that, it's found to be not more detrimental than the existing neighborhood. All righty. Got all the records? So, we'll take a roll call vote. Elaine Baker?
Agree.
Jack, Kelly?
Aye.
Eric Spahn, yes. Do you have approval?
Well, thank you very much. You know, I always appreciate your time and consideration, and it's always a learning experience, so thank you for your time. I will, I will, we will submit a revised plan to your records showing the eight point three, so that-
We'll just amend the motion just to add that, you know, yes, we do have to-
Yeah, we'll get to the new plan right away. Well, thank you very much for your time. You guys had a nice evening, too.
Thank you very much. And thank you for putting together the presentation.
I want to be able to explain the, what I'm asking for. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, Mario.
Next public hearing, Michael Kirkpatrick, 812th Street. Advocate is requesting a special permit binding for relief of section nine seven four DD, maximum lot coverage of the Newbury zoning bylaws and any other permit relief as may be required under the Town of Newbury zoning bylaws to allow the proposed use project in order to build a shed on the lot with over twenty percent coverage on the property located at 812 Plum Island, Newbury, Mass., Seserac U zero three, lot ninety-four.
Thank you. Are you the applicant?
Yes, sir.
All right. All right, Mr. Kirkpatrick, please explain what you'd like to do here.
I'm trying to put up a shed on my property. I've decided, found out I needed one. We're already over on the coverage. He, I was going to start out, I believe the drawings show a nine-by-fifteen shed, I had to cut it down to eight feet wide. So, it's going to be an eight-by-fifteen instead of a nine-by-fifteen. And as, I've got the setbacks are all set, I'm off the property line by ten feet all the way around.
So, the one point of confusion reviewing was, was adding the, adding this plan and then having this plan?
Yes.
Because this, this just says, you know, lot, fence line, not, it was the responsibility of others, not by us to-
Yes, that, that's a different kind of drawing altogether. The as-built one that shows the steel shows the actual property line is twenty feet from the side of the house.
So, would you just remove this from that?
Well, I had to submit that one because the conservation commission wanted to know what I was putting the shed on, if it was on beach or if it was on grass or if it was in the river.
Okay.
And it was, you know, it shows that it's lawn.
So, it's, it's eight foot four from a fence, but it's actually within the ten-foot side yard set-back?
Yes, the shed would be right on the ten-foot line.
Okay.
And the reason for that is it had to be, they wanted space between the house and the shed, so I had to make the shed smaller in order to fit in that area.
And this was, whose direction was that? ComCom? Conservation Commission or-
I think it was the, the building inspector, I'm not sure.
Samantha discussed it with Peter, conservation agent with the building commissioner.
All right, so if that's ten feet, that's eight feet, and you've got twenty point five, you've got two point five feet between the shed and the house. That's the, that's the way it's done? That's what you're proposing?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so now we know where the shed goes. We know the shed is within the side yard setbacks, the yard setbacks. Now, the question of increased lot coverage is one of, where are we with that?
From twenty-eight to thirty.
And there's no, there's no, how high is the building built off the ground?
Is that the house or the shed?
The house.
Well, the base of the house is about thirteen feet up from where the shed's going to go.
And the shed can't go underneath the house in some way, shape, or form?
Well, it's, it could, but I didn't think he'd let me do that.
I'm just trying to, you know, our lot coverage is at twenty percent, and you're at thirty, and you're at twenty-eight pushing it to thirty. Do you have any site plan other than, do you have any more site plan of, of the neighborhood or showing how the houses on your street stack up or?
No, I don't have anything.
Elaine, you have any questions on this one?
It's very vague, so I don't know.
Michelle or?
I really can't make a determination, there's not enough information here.
Well, the, if you take out these plans that show how the shed is constructed, is it a tool shed or just a storage shed or?
It's going to be a, a small little workshop, I'd have, plus storage, mostly storage.
So, Elaine, this, this drawing that has 12th Street at the bottom, which shows the steel framing?
Yeah.
That shows-
I've got that one.
Right, so that shows that the steel frame of the house that it's built to the property line is twenty feet, twenty point five feet.
Yeah.
And then, then it shows that the dash line is a ten-foot side yard setback. So, the shed would be located within the buildable footprint of the lot because it would be ten, ten feet from side rear lot lines.
You know, there is a lot of space underneath here, I don't, you know, that, as you thought, maybe you want to build the shed underneath the house.
Yeah, I would have been absolutely happy to put the shed underneath the house, but I don't think they let me do that. From what I heard at the conservation commission, they wanted two feet open space at least under the house. If I do that, it's going to push the shed up against the floor of the house.
And we have, I don't know how you're, I don't know, I don't remember the plans for access into the, into the house. Do you have any hung storage from?
I'm sorry?
Do you have any hung storage that's below the steel framing of the first floor?
No.
So, you just come upstairs and you come up into the house?
Yes.
And your utilities are all up above or?
The utilities are in a little tiny cubby hole thing that goes all the way to the ground.
Got it. Okay, because there is a provision and an understanding in the P I O D for some limited storage space at that level for utilities or storage, recognizing that some of that is needed and with some, some smaller lots in terms of shed locations. And I guess the determination of not more detrimental to the neighborhood is just understanding how the neighbors' lots are, are loaded and whether you're pushing up against, you know, are, are you in keeping with the neighborhood? I think you're obviously meeting the setbacks, and you sat through the last hearing that somehow you were over or approaching on that setback, it would be a non-starter, so I think we're, we're really just discovering a lot of coverage at the moment since it's-
Is there a huge difference in elevation from the front to the back of the shed?
Well, it's not huge, but there is a difference.
Like five, six, five feet?
Yeah.
So, is that going to be on-
Maybe not even that.
So, so is that going to be on the level part of, of the?
No, it's going to have to be, it's going to be like four feet off the ground in the back and then two feet off the ground in the front.
Okay. But there's some grade change, like here-
Right, yeah.
In front.
Yeah. I have a front side yard that's elevated, but that's not where I'm putting it. I'm putting it in the back. If I can.
The only concern is, you know, the additional dirt, twenty to thirty lot coverage.
Where's the satellite?
Oh, I saw one today. I drove by it today, this.
Thank you. Do you want to see?
I see.
Thank you. This is why I was asking about the neighborhood, I don't quite remember the, the application in terms of building the house, but obviously the house in ComCom, it's nice that ComCom has reviewed it before we reviewed it as opposed to going second, getting an understanding from them about locating or locating its position on the site or accepting its position on the site. Jeff, do you have an increase with, do you have an issue with the increase of lot coverage?
Seems, as the GBA term is the minimum to me. In other words, not very big, two percent or something it seems. Can't see that really.
Uh, is that the house or the shed?
The house.
Well, the base of the house is about thirteen feet up from where the shed's gonna go.
And the shed can't go underneath the house in some way, shape or form?
Well, it's, it could, but I didn't think he'd let me do that.
I'm just trying to, you know, where lot coverage is at twenty percent and you're at thirty and you're at twenty-eight pushing it to thirty. Do you have any site plan other than, do you have any more site plan of, of the neighborhood or showing how the houses on your street stack up or?
Uh, no, I don't have anything.
Elaine, you have any questions on this one?
It's very vague, so I don't know.
Michelle?
I really can't make a determination. There's not enough information here.
Well, the, if you take out these plans for showing how the shed is constructed, is it a tool shed or just a storage shed or?
It's, uh, gonna be a small workshop, I have, plus storage, mostly storage.
So Elaine, this, this drawing that has twelve street at the bottom which shows the steel framing?
Yeah.
That shows.
I've got that one.
Right, so that shows that the steel frame of the house that it's built to the property line is twenty feet, twenty point five feet.
Yeah.
And then, then it shows that the dash line is a ten-foot sideyard setback. So the shed would be located within the buildable footprint of the lot because it would be ten, ten feet from side rear lot lines.
You know, there is a lot of space underneath here, you know, that, as you thought, maybe you wanted to build the shed underneath the house.
Yeah, I would have been absolutely happy to put the shed underneath the house, but I don't think they let me do that. From what I heard at the conservation commission, they wanted two feet open space at least under the house. If I do that, it's gonna push the shed up against the floor of the house.
And we have, I don't know how you're, I don't know, I don't remember the plans for access into the, into the house. Um, do you have any hung storage from?
I'm sorry?
Do you have any hung storage that's below the steel framing of the first floor?
No.
So you just come upstairs and you come up into the house?
Yes.
And your utilities are all up above or?
The utilities are in a little tiny cubby hole thing that goes all the way to the ground.
Yeah. Okay, because there is a provision and an understanding in the P I O D for some limited storage space at that level for utilities or storage, recognizing that some of that is needed and with some, some smaller lots in terms of shed locations. And I guess the determination of not more detrimental to the neighborhood is just understanding how the neighbors' lots are, are loaded and whether you're pushing up against, um, you know, are you in keeping with the neighborhood? I think you're obviously meeting the setbacks. You sat through the last hearing that somehow you were over or approaching on that setback. It would be a nonstarter, so I think we're, we're really just discovering a lot of coverage at the moment and since it's.
Is there a huge difference in elevation from the front to the back of the shed?
Well, it's not huge, but there is a difference.
Like five, six, five feet?
Yeah.
So is that gonna be?
Maybe not even that.
So, so is that gonna be on the level part of, of the?
No, it's gonna have to be, it's gonna be like four feet off the ground in the back and then two feet off the ground in the front.
Okay.
But there's some grade change, like here in front?
I have a front side yard that's elevated, but that's not where I'm putting it. I'm putting it in the back. If I can.
The only concern is, you know, the additional dirt, twenty to thirty, lot coverage.
If you guys want, where's the satellite?
Oh, I saw one today. I drove by it today.
Thank you. Do you want to see?
I see.
Thank you. This is why I was asking about the neighborhood. I don't quite remember the, the application in terms of building the house, but obviously the house in Comcom, it's nice that Comcom has reviewed it before we reviewed it as opposed to going second, getting an understanding from them about locating or locating its position on the site or accepting its position on the site. Jeff, do you have an increase with, do you have an issue with the increase of lot coverage?
Seems, uh, as the Z B A term is the minimum to me. In other words, not very big, two percent or something it seems. Can't see that really decreasing in the neighborhood.
Elaine?
Yeah. I don't have any issues with the increase.
Okay. Mario?
Yeah, I'm good.
Okay. So is there anybody here that would like to speak in favor of the project? Is there anybody here that would like to speak against the project? Okay, so we'll close the public hearing. And is there any discussion or debate officially among board members, Elaine?
So it's gonna be eight, it's gonna be eight feet?
Yes.
Not nine?
No.
Okay.
Okay, so is there a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the relief from section ninety-seven D D maximum lot coverage of Newbury zoning bylaws in order to build a shed on the lot with over twenty percent lot coverage with setbacks that are in compliance with the bylaws at eight twelve street Palm Island, Newbury, Mass.
Okay. In terms of the application, do we have an application where we can cross off the eight foot four on the structural drawings and just redraw the?
Mike, please.
All right, we have your clean copy of the. Just make that an agreement. Thank you. So with that motion, is there a second?
Second.
All right, all those are favored. I'll do a rule call. Elaine?
Yes.
Mario?
Yes.
Eric says yes. Okay, so as your, um, application gets booked, filed and recorded, just gonna make some, some edits on it, you can initial it, I'll initial it, and then we'll use that as the official copy.
Okay.
Does that make sense? Thank you.
Thank you.
Where'd you go? You done? Okay. So just have me initial that so that we can, we can record that as the original application. I just took off the eight point four feet to the fence. Yep. And Chrissy, are we at a good place for you drafting up motions and, and sending them to us for review?
Yes, and I have to, I've been drafting the meeting minutes. I'm gonna email them to the team so that they can be discussed at the February or March meeting.
Okay.
If again, who's that?
And if you need anything, you'll, you'll, you can send it, did she send a group email to us if she has meeting minutes or?
Yeah, they can be distributed to, to the.
Team for edits, okay.
Or for, for review. The edit should be made at the meeting.
And if there are edits to a motion like this that Mario made, Chrissy wants to say, you said what? Does she email Mario directly or does she?
Susan him.
What's that process? Because previously the motion was drafted and Susan would just send it to me. I would read it first. Any edits, send it back, and then she would send it to the board members for review and sign. So.
Yeah, I mean typically what we do with a planning board is it's, it's drawn to go to the entire board, but it will get reviewed, discussed on a meeting.
But what is it, there's like a question just on the tech, Chrissy wants a technicality or something, or did you, did you say this in drafting the, the law, so we can sign? Just initial that one?
Is that it?
That is it.
Thank you.
We're good.
Thank you.
All right.
Yeah, I mean, I think if there's a question, reach out to.
Trying to set up the new, we have a little system under Susan and we're, we're changing it. And, and since the motions are becoming more professional, more inclusive of the record and, and more detailed, just wanna make sure that there's every effort to help you in doing that. That's all.
I'm gonna dive into it in the next couple of weeks and get you guys everything, so.
But I, I do think when applications come in, that if you start to set up a motion, at least to record the meeting dates and the documentation, it goes a lot easier if you just do it at the time than wait to do it in the rears, isn't when a motion is made and you have to go back and, and check the facts. All righty. Go on to old business.
Old business.
Mr. Scott?
Barrett Kaplan, five Deloli Way, request for an informal discussion with the Z B A regarding raising previously approved house, two additional feet to meet code requirements of electric base flood elevation in A D zone. Base flood elevation thirteen feet to determine whether this change can be considered a minor modification or will require a new application.
Let's draw a one-page drawing of the.
So the height from mean grade to the mean height of roof is thirty-three feet, six and a half inches. Where previously it was thirty, thirty feet?
Thirty-one, just basically two feet even lower.
Okay. So your question here before is just, do you need to resubmit a whole new application in which to do this, or can we modify this?
Correct. I like the idea of a minor modification and if it, if it helps, I know that at one point you suggested possibly changing the height of that interior bottom space by two feet, but that would create a little bit of room to work in. I could live with a one foot difference and then all we're talking about is this much space to change the height of the house to accommodate that.
I don't, hey, you're under the, the height limitation, so it's not like you're asking for anything that you shouldn't be getting.
Right.
Or by right. It just, the only question is, is how technically we do this, because we haven't had something like this come before us in, in my eight years. And for that matter, I guess we assume that everything that someone builds actually meets all their drawings and nobody's been caught or double-checked on something and dragged back before us to say this doesn't meet the original. So in terms of process, um, I assume that we would, or could take a revised motion and that motion would then have to carry the appeals period and then be re-recorded? Martha? Not to put you on the spot?
Yeah, I mean, I'm not really sure.
So I would suggest from the, the board, at least I'll tell you my opinion, that I don't have an issue with this. I just think that we need to figure out how to do this properly and that we would have to ask this town council to iron out the procedure, however that may be.
Wouldn't it just be an end to the existing?
Right, but since you have to advertise and have public meetings and it, it had a twenty-one day appeal period and it's now been filed and recorded, we're at this, where are we? We're in a little bit of a gray zone. And if, if town council says, yeah, you just make an amendment, make a motion, refile it, you're, you're good to go. So I just think we need to make sure we have the proper procedures down, we get it in writing, and then we have a course of action. We'll, we'll have a course of action for anything else comes before us like this.
I mean, there should be, there should be some process for it. There should be a formal application and whether it has to go through public hearing or not, I think is the, the big question.
I don't think it's that big of a deal. I'll at least convey my opinion to town council, but town council will have to speak for us and then we'll, we'll get back to you and we'll go from there.
That would be, that would be great. That's all I can ask for.
Yep.
Hopefully we don't have to go through all that time and expense again.
I understand, but we just need to, again, make, make a proper procedure out of this and make sure that we did our job and you're, you've got everything that you need legally to stand on and, and keep going.
Okay. Surprised it hasn't happened before.
Well, that's why I made my little statement, like, you know, I'm sure people move stairs and do things and when they get building, things change a little bit and it's, it's, we're not the enforcers.
Yeah.
And I don't drive around looking for stuff. I, you know, I would come back and go with the pay measures to see when the project's done and it actually means stuff. We trust you, we trust you residents in Newbury.
Yes.
So we appreciate you bringing this before us and it, it will take some time. We'll try to get it, um, an email back through Chrissy to you as soon as possible.
And if you need additional pages showing other elevations, basically this is telling the story, I think.
Yep, and that you have some effort to, to even minimize it more, should that be, we can figure that out once we have the process.
Okay.
Okay?
Great.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have an easy night tonight.
All right, let's, what's, what's next on the agenda?
Oh, the discussion in Z B A is in moving in person to virtually talk about that and then just the joint Z B A planning board meeting for potential zoning.
Right, so are there dates floating around for that? Do we wanna do it on a Thursday? Do we wanna do it on a, on your typical meeting?
Yeah, our meetings are the first and third Wednesday.
I don't, I don't think we wanna do it at a regular meeting, no, because we'll just get sidetracked. That is a special meeting.
Okay.
And the board's very, uh, planning board is very open to it. I think we were sort of waiting on you when you, you know, think that you have your, your thoughts together as to what, what issues you wanna address.
Yeah, so I'd ask each Elaine, Michelle, Jack and Mario if you would go through and either think of things like I've got, you know, we don't have a definition, we have a fair amount of definitions that come up, but we don't have, like loft. And just then some discussion points, like can we just explain a finding and a special permit, where it comes from? We, our bylaws are from the state's chapter forty and then from there they set up the means in which for us to create our bylaws. But truthfully, I'm not, you know, I don't have a whole set of state laws. I haven't read them all. And so with planning board, will town council be present too for?
Well, it's a question because there is actually gonna be a, a whole recodification of our zoning that town council will be undertaking and so all of these comments will be feeding into that, so I think it might be beneficial to happen there as well.
So what I'm saying is I would ask, like, can we just go over special permit finding? Are they the same thing or are they really different things? And if they're different things, how are they different and how do we, how do we reread this and interpret that here? Do we need a definition for loft? Can we go over the definition of reconstruct? Because reconstruct does not mean demolish. It's two separate things and sometimes we should just be clearer on some of these meetings. As brought up today, section ninety-seven dash four, D five D does say side lot. Is it meant just to be the side lot or side and rear? And I, I've always read that as ten feet from a side lot is, it's the side lot. It's, it's both rear and sides. It's not slicing and dicing it. And so if we keep running up against people trying to interpret this, we should try to clarify it. Now, understand that the P I O D was brokered between Newbury Port and Newbury and it's not, it's a piece of the bylaw that isn't exactly ours because of the whole agreement of how the sewer was, was run in order to make that project happen. So I'd like someone to explain to me, is there any room to change this? Do we have to get together with Newbury Port? So all those kinda topics, I think, are what we wanna discuss.
And all the more reason I think town council would be, it would be great.
Yeah, absolutely.
I think the definition of the roof, I'd seen, I've tried, and I have it somewhere. I gotta find it again, but I've saved, like when I'm doing my normal daily business stuff and I come across Somerville and I see like zoning, I might run and check their definition of a roof and try to save it. And so the question is, if like, this is in like town Cambridge, you know, they have a flat roof, they have a parapet, they have a pitched roof. We just say roof. Can, we have a definition of a roof deck? If a roof deck covers the whole roof, is it, is it the roof? Is it letting light, light and air through? What about a roof deck that has a solid railing or an open railing or a glass railing? Is it changing the intent of light and air and size and mass? Should that, should something happen there? This, the, the level, we've gotten clarification from town council. When you come up the stairs, it's flat, it's the third floor, but it's just landing to the stairs, so technically it's not a floor. It doesn't count as a level. Is there some size or limit to that? That it should not be any more than the width of the stair plus a depth of five feet. So you're at four by five, it's twenty. You're at, you got an eight-foot stair and you go five, four times eight. And so there's some means in which we have some control. And I'm not looking to be onerous. I'm just looking to make sure that we're fair and we're not slicing and dicing and having too much leeway with our, our own thoughts.
Well, I certainly understand your confusion, you know. I mean, we, you know, we also have trouble interpreting it ourselves. The only thing we, personally, what I try to do is just shoot for consistency, you know, in interpretation. But again, you, you deal with the P I O D at virtually every meeting. We rarely see anything with the P I O D, so it's, I, I, you have my sympathy, you know, because it is a very difficult.
Plumbush Downs is like a anomaly to the whole thing unto itself and there's no, there's, if you take it literally, they have, there's very little control because they have so much area that they all claim, but yet they're individual lots and so some of the same dimensional requirements you would think would, would apply.
And the only other thing I'd add too is, and I, of course, my, I think everyone on, on our board is retired, so we sometimes meet during the day. I don't know if that's practical for you folks to consider, but what I'm saying is it doesn't necessarily have to mean evening meeting.
Yeah, at the moment I could be open to a Saturday, but.
Even a Saturday would be.
So jammed up at work that I'd have to take a day off and if I take a day off, I'm just so much farther behind that I can't envision in the next month.
And evening meeting is fine too. I'm just offering, you know, the option.
I think a lot of it might really depend on town council's availability.
Right. So can we just say that, okay, we're here on the twentieth, so can we plan out at least February twentieth and beyond as possible dates and give us one more month as a Z B A board to collect their own thoughts? I don't think we need to all send them in. I think we, we, we just did do this individually. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I mean, I don't think there's any, any timeframe, especially if this is gonna feed into the bigger effort. So, you know, if you wanna start, maybe you wanna look at March or whatever.
Well, I would hope this, this massive thing and everything kinda settles down and we're, Elaine's here in person and we're, you know, things are better and that would be one reason to move it off a little bit. We've talked about this for a while. And truthfully, I think this is something that we should gear up to do once a year at least and take notes of, of things so that we can be more consistent and we can have. and take notes of things so that we can be more consistent, and we can have consistent interpretations. And for that matter, like, if you had a technicality of the side yard versus something, like I said, email Martha. If you want Town Council's opinion, ask Martha, and she can set you up with Tracy. If she feels the same question from three of you, she may send it to Tracy and then disseminate it back to you, or she may just connect you with Tracy in order to discuss the idea. But typically, when you have, like, when I send something to her, I have a little bit of my own personal interpretation in it, which is why I can't, or shouldn't be sharing it with you, because then you start reading what I'm thinking, and then now we're starting to debate without updating, right? So, you know, if there were six of us, two of us could sit down and read things and kind of help ourselves, but we can't do that.
It's difficult with a three-member board because of the open meeting law.
Right.
Precisely the reason you stated.
Yep. Yeah, and I used to, when I started, I was also doing the town hall stuff, and Sam was right there, and he was part of the committee, so I would pull him aside and just open it up and start, what does his mean? So, there was some help there. Alrighty. Is there any other business before us?
No.
No? Alright. Elaine, you all good?
I'm good. We'll be done. I really need to go to bed.
Yep, we're good. I hope you feel better and... We'll talk, just say, motion due in there?
Yep.
Second? Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Alright, motion's adjourned. Thank you, everybody.